Okay, seeing now we've reached the ten o'clock hour. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Delnor and the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for which said board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. This time, please take a brief moment of reflection. Kylie, would you please take role?
Supervisor Starkey?
I'm here.
Supervisor Howard?
Here.
Supervisor Short?
I'm here.
Vice Chair Borges?
I'm here.
And I'll make note that Chair Wilson is absent.
Thank you. Now would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any introduction of new employees?
Yes, we do, Chair. We have a couple from Health and Human Services today, and I believe Cheyenne will lead that.
First off, I'd like to welcome Janelle Open Change. She is joining us as the Deputy Director in our Public Health Branch. I'm very excited to fill our last Deputy Director role, and I'll let her say a few things.
Good morning. I have a master's in public health and some experience, most recently at San Bernardino County where I worked as an epidemiologist and also led the community health and equity team and managed the public health workforce grants. I'm so pleased to join the public health team here in this lovely county, and I look forward to supporting and elevating the good work the team is doing. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you, welcome.
And then also welcome Program Manager Jennifer Ortman to introduce her new employee in our Public Assistance Employment Training Branch.
Good morning, Board. I'm Jennifer Ortman, Program Manager for Public Assistance Employment and Training, and this is our new integrative caseworker, Ja Yang.
Hi, my name is Ja Yang. I used to work at Delnor Childcare Council. I help families with their needs for childcare, so I'm happy to be here to help the bigger population, everybody else at the DHHS.
Thank you for being here. Welcome.
We have one more. We have our acting Clerk of the Board Kylie Goffner, who is excited to introduce our new Clerk of the Board.
Hi, Board. After 10 years, I'm excited to announce I am handing over the reins to Samantha Birch. She will be the new Clerk of the Board. I'm going to be still sitting and hovering for a few more meetings, but she is intended to take my place if you wanted to.
My name is Samantha Birch. I'm very excited to be here, and I hope to be with you guys for many more years.
Thank you. Thank Samantha.
Thank you, guys.
That's it?
That is it. Okay, County Council, any reportable actions from closed session?
No, Chair, not today.
Okay. At this time, the Chair requests any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda of this item. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county. Subsequent to the posting of the agenda, the matter requires action before the next regular meeting. Is there any such items? Okay, seeing none, we are going to skip report outs to the end to move on to the consent agenda. So, let's see. Is there any public comment on consent agenda items only at this time? Seeing no public comment, Mr. Chairman, I'll move, we approve consent.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Kylie, would you pull the vote?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Vice Chair Borges?
Yes. And hidden in that consent agenda is a special item that we were told we are not allowed to make a big deal about, and it's for, it is honoring Mary Jo Duncan after 39 years, and so would you please come up to the front? And we're going to do something a little different, and I'm going to ask your bestie to read it to you, if you're okay with that.
If you didn't know, that's Kylie. I'm going to hand it to her, and she's going to read it to you.
I'm going to get through it without crying, I promise. Okay. A resolution of the Delnor County Board of Supervisors commending Mary Jo Duncan for her exemplary 39 years of public service as a county employee. Whereas, Mary Jo embarked on her career with the county in March 1973 as a part-time clerk intermediate at the county clerk's office, swiftly transitioning to a full-time clerk intermediate position at the Delnor County Justice Court by July 1973, and later ascending to the role of supervising justice clerk in 1980 until her resignation in July 1987. Whereas, Mary Jo's unwavering commitment to public service led her back to the county in 1999 where she commenced as a temporary office technician in the county administrative office, eventually securing a permanent position as a Secretary I within the Community Development Department's Engineering Division. By 2002, she had ascended to Secretary III, maintaining this position until April 2023, when she graciously transferred into an account clerk role to facilitate the training of her successor for the Engineering Division. Whereas, in 2007, Mary Jo was lauded as both County Employee of the Year and an integral member of the Team of the Year for her instrumental role in producing a commemorative video documentary for the county's 150th anniversary, a testament to her exceptional service and dedication to the public. Whereas, throughout her tenure, Mary Jo served as a cornerstone of the Engineering Division, diligently overseeing the processing of encroachment permits, grading permits, parcel maps, final maps, records of surveys, and bonds, while also holding a lead role within the county service area number one, where she earned the affectionate moniker "The Sewer Queen." Whereas, among Mary Jo's many attributes, her steadfast friendship, unwavering support, and compassionate demeanor, I'm not going to cry, during times of adversity, have endured her to her colleagues for ever cementing her status as an indispensable member of the CDD family. Whereas, as Mary Jo embarks on the next chapter of her journey, she eagerly anticipates the newfound freedom to tend to her personal pursuits such as tending to her garden, basking in the simple joys of maintaining her lawn without constraints, and cherishing precious moments with her beloved family, including her husband Rick, three sons, their wives, and her cherished grandchildren, and not to mention her best friend Kylie. Whereas...
You threw that in, didn't you?
Whereas, as Mary Jo embraces the dawn of a new chapter in her life, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Delnor, State of California, extend its profound gratitude and commendation for her 39 years of unwavering commitment to public service, offering heartfelt wishes for continued fulfillment and joy in all her future endeavors. Passed and adopted this 28th day of May 2024.
Thank you. I've always been proud to be a county employee. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary Jo.
We love you, Mary Jo!
Okay, thank you for that. Now we are going to move on down to item number 20. We are looking to approve the designation of Supervisor Starkey as the county's 2024 alternate representative to the National Association of Counties. Number two is to approve Supervisor Starkey to travel to the NACO Annual Conference in Hillsborough County, Florida, and authorize payment of the travel costs associated with Supervisor Starkey's attendance at the NACO Annual Conference as requested by Chair Wilson. At this time, I will ask for public comment on item number 20 only.
Great. So, I noticed that none of those financials were placed for a public review, and normally that's a standard procedure, so I don't know why you would pass something without allowing the public to know how much is being spent. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any other public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the Board.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Kylie, would you pull the vote?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Vice Chair Borges?
Yes.
Okay, item 21. Introduced by Title Only An Ordnance of the Delnor County Board of Supervisors Amending Ordnance 2021-006 and Establishing the 2024 Master Fee Ordinance for the County of Delnor in accordance with Government Code Section 54985. And then number two is to waive further reading. Number three, set a public hearing to adopt the ordinance on June 11, 2024. Number four is designate the Clerk of the Board to prepare a summary of the ordinance for publication as requested by the Sheriff, Coroner, with concurrence of the county administrative officer, and presented by county council. So, any public comment on item 21? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the Board.
I have a couple questions.
Absolutely.
And the Sheriff is not here, so I don't know who's going to answer these questions. But, one is that the, first question, and CAO probably will know this, this is only for the CCW master fee schedule, correct? We're not increasing any other of the fee schedules for the county as of yet?
That's correct.
Okay. The second thing is that my math ain't mathin', because previously a CCW for a new two-year permit was $65. They've asked that it increase $30 for a new social media background investigation per applicant, as well as $15 to offset the equipment, which is $3,500 a year, divided by 180 applicants per year on average, that's 45. Forty-five and 65 is 110, yet we're increasing it to 136. Can anybody explain that additional $26?
Yeah, those are the fees associated with staff time in order to process the requests.
Okay. In the future, if we could have those fees actually outlined too, because I think the public really should know exactly when we increase fees, how we're increasing the fees, and why we're doing so much, so that those, you know, because I don't want to overcharge the public any time that we, if we can avoid it, I really want to make sure that we're not overcharging the public. So, I just didn't see the staff time increase in the board report. It might have been in there.
It's on the page two of attachments. It's a calculation provided by the department. It shows the increased staff time.
Page two of the attachments?
There's the second attachment, yes.
This one here?
Yes.
Right on the side.
Okay. And it shows, I don't, still don't see it. Oh, the rate per hour. So, we're charging $96 an hour? I'm not seeing it, so...
The actual productive rate might be $96 an hour for the staff that provides that service, but I think it's only based on like a 15-minute or half-hour process time. I can't recall. I'd have to look at the attachment again, but it is calculated in that attachment.
Okay. Okay, that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
I'd move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
You know, I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Vice Chair Borges?
Yes.
Let's see, item number 22. Introduced by Title Only An Ordnance of the Delnor County Board of Supervisors Repealing Certain Chapters of the Delnor County Code Relating to the Cable Television Advisory Commission and the Aviation Advisory Commission. Number two, waive further reading. Number three, set a public hearing to adopt the ordinance on June 11, 2024. And number four, designate the Clerk of the Board to prepare a summary of the ordinance for publication as requested by county council. Do we have any public comment on item 22?
Move to approve as read into the record.
We have a motion.
Second that motion.
And we have a second.
I just have one question, sorry.
Supervisor Starkey, feel free.
And under the discussion and summary, it says this ordinance repeals three chapters, and yet there's only two listed. Is that just a typo?
Yes, I apologize for that.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing the third. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Kylie, would you pull the vote?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Vice Chair Borges?
Yes.
Okay, item 23. Receive an update from staff on the next steps for improvements to Pike Field as included in the Delnor County Strategic Plan as requested by the Assistant CAO. Randy?
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
So, I think this is one of those situations of perhaps be careful what you ask for. So, we put together a project for rehabilitation of Pike. This is a project that shouldn't be new to any members of the Board. We've heard of issues with drainage, with lighting, with, you know, uses through maybe, you know, more than just the seasons that we currently use it for presently. And so, kind of wrapping all those different ideas and concerns up, we had requested a federal earmark of, I believe, not just Congressman Huffman, but also Senator, both Senators, I believe. And when we met with the county engineer, kind of went through the pre-planning and project formulation process internally, all of those different pieces really exceeded what was likely to be actually approved through the federal earmark. Typically, a federal earmark is going to range anywhere from, you know, a couple hundred thousand upwards of maybe 2 million if you're lucky. When we discussed the jail rehabilitation project previously, you know, we noted that we were extremely lucky to get the $3 million that we received for that project. So, knowing that the total project cost was likely going to exceed what would be available, we really kind of had to pare back what our ask ultimately was. What we ended up landing on was about a $1.8 million project that would have included drainage improvements, lighting, and rehabilitation of the playground equipment and a pedestrian walkway through the fields, which would have been great. But again, $1.8 million was the price tag that the county engineer kind of established for even just those pieces. If you included all the pieces that we had originally asked for, it was upwards of, I think, close to $7 million, so clearly above and beyond anything that would likely be approved. Ultimately, as the Board is aware, what we ended up receiving was half a million dollars. Again, great, be careful what you ask for, because now we need to put together a project to actually do those other pieces that really do need to be done. So, we had an internal meeting last week, the week before last, with the Parks Director, the Recreation Coordinator, Administration, and our Chief Financial Officer, kind of went through the different scenarios, and what we ultimately are recommending happen is that we use our on-call professional services, specifically probably an architect, or maybe a landscape architect, and a planner to come, to put together a project, kind of presenting a vision for all those different pieces that we would, we would really like to do. Obviously, the conversation would be, would be one that involves the public, the Board, the stakeholders, all the different users. I could totally foresee and anticipate, you know, maybe like an evening public workshop where we invite our planner, architect, whatever, whatever the professional services provider is in, to be available, to answer questions, to hear people's ideas, and then hopefully to be able to formulate all that into kind of a vision for what it is we want to do. This was included as part of the strategic plan under the goal of improving public infrastructure and county-owned property aesthetics. So, I think it's consistent with the strategic plan, but wanted to give the update to the Board today, because after the last meeting, whenever we sent the letter of appreciation to Congressman Huffman, I think it was pretty clear that, you know, this was a project that was going to exceed our resources. So, the idea would be that we put together the, kind of the project vision, we do some project formulation and pre-planning, and then hopefully we're in a better position to actually pursue potentially external funding, whether that be grants, whether that be public-private partnerships, whether it be tribal partnerships. We're going to have to develop basically a funding strategy based on whatever the project ultimately is designed to include. So, just wanted to give the update to the Board today. If there's any thoughts, concerns, or suggestions, we're certainly available, but that's just a kind of an update on this item.
Thank you, Randy. I'll start with questions from the Board before you go too far. Do we have any questions? Supervisor Howard, go ahead.
Yeah, before Randy takes a seat. Wanted to let you get comfortable. I understand the planning process, but a half million dollars isn't a lot to do a lot of things, right? And you guys have identified areas of concern and most likely have prioritized those areas in our planning process. My hope is that none of those dollars would be committed to that process with the public engagement, and to use as much as we can towards the implementation, whatever that top priority is, because that's probably going to gobble up every dime of this thing. So, is that something that our staff is willing to consider if we do go out for public engagement, to get folks' inputs on their priority?
Hundred, hundred percent. I mean, we know that probably the most critical issues are going to be the drainage and the field surface, so that is really going to consume, you know, probably more than the money that's currently available. So, it's going to, it's going to involve multiple different funding sources in order to have that funding strategy be feasible, but yeah, 100%.
Is Measure R funds available for this type of project?
It theoretically could be. This would be public infrastructure, so under the terms of Measure R, theoretically, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Stark?
Just, I'm curious, the timeframe for the solicitation for the professional services. What are you, what are you looking at time-wise?
That's a good question. What we're finding with professional services is that there's a really high degree of reluctance from a lot of potential providers to even consider requests for proposals these days. Everybody's just super busy, so it's really hard to say with any degree of confidence what, what it is we'd be looking at. I would say realistically probably a two-month process in that range.
Because I'm just kind of curious, is, was there a timeframe put on spending that allocation that we got from Congress for this project? Is there a completion date time?
There, there will be. So, the funds have been announced, but they haven't actually been provided. What we're, what we're going to have to do is actually submit a formal application for what's going to be a federal grant. And so, all federal grants have a four-year timeframe for expenditures, so after the grant is provided, then we'll have four years to use it. So, I think we'll have plenty of time from that perspective.
Okay. And then according, like, we submitted the proposal for 1.8 million. We requested that, we didn't get it. Are we able to, like, redesign? Are we going to be able to vary off of what we originally put in there? Like, so we said drainage and the walkway. Are we going to be able to now, let's say they want lights? Can we do that, or do we have to stick with our original request?
We, we can, we can definitely, the thing about the earmarks that we've kind of come to learn is that as long as it's used for kind of a purpose that's related to what you ask us for, you're really going to be fine. A lot of the proposals that end up going in are very vague and not very, not very well-defined. The jail rehabilitation, I think, would be a good example, where we knew we had a pretty substantial cost to do the rehabilitation within the jail, and ultimately what we're finding out is that the funding agency, which is in the case of the jail project, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, weirdly, they just want to have the money spent in the jail. So, this will be through HUD, and I would presume that it'll be a similar process, where as long as it's used for the improvement of Pike, we should be fine.
Okay, because, you know, one of the biggest, people approach me the most about is Pike's Field, surprisingly. It's a huge part of our community, and so I think when we start with our public engagement, we, again, be careful what we ask for, because I think we're going to get a lot of ideas on how to best spend it and what the priorities should be, and I just want to make sure that we're prepared for that, and that if we said we were going to fix the drainage and it's going to cost, you know, five... to fix the drainage and it's going to cost, you know, five hundred thousand to fix the drainage, we might want to start there. But again, I appreciate your work on this. I do appreciate you bringing it to the board for us to have a conversation about it because it's something so valuable to our public. And so, heap up that good work. Let's figure this out and make the best of what we can do.
Perfect. Supervisor Short, you good?
Good.
Okay. Thank you, Randy. I'm going to open up for public comment. Do you have any public comment out there on this item only? Okay, seeing none. Again, thank you, Randy, for all your effort on it. It's, it's very promising. So now, we are just about to our ten twenty-five timed item. So, I am going to jump back to that. I'm just going to fumble the papers around until we get to ten twenty-five. So, I'm going to read into the public comment period. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Now, ask for any public comment. Please come on up.
Hello. My name is Kelly. I'm the mother of Tamara Sanders, a twenty-nine-year-old murder victim who was killed in the, on the fire on Howland Hill Road and Birch Avenue here in Crescent City. Michelle Green suggested Tamara's death was a suicide. For any of you that don't know, that's the coroner's assistant. If that was the case, my daughter poured accelerant all over herself, locked the door from the outside somehow, and lit herself on fire. Michelle Green continued to tell us flabbergasting ludicrous stories for fifteen days before I was even able to speak to a deputy. Ludicrous stories such as a rat knocked a piece of metal off a beam sparking the fire. She bore no understanding of how her ego and theories could hurt a mother faced with a traumatic death. When Tamara's first autopsy was offensively inaccurate, I paid seven hundred dollars so she would be exhumed, and I paid sixty-five hundred dollars for a second autopsy. The second autopsy found my daughter's body had an elongated cylindrical cavity with defined walls in her left flank. This indicates the possibility of a gunshot wound. If this were the case, she shot herself in the left flank, possibly in the frontotemporal lobe. The possibility of this, she shot herself in the left flank, locked the door from the outside, doused herself in chemicals, and lit a fire to herself and about three-quarters of that building. It's very obvious that it was an arson. There's a sworn affidavit under penalty of perjury claiming the night of the fire he heard three gunshots and Tamara scream. I was told Deputy Amesqua saw a gun and shell casings on the scene when he arrived. I stand before you and ask that Deputy Amesqua be able to speak about what he saw when he found Tamara's remains on May third, twenty twenty-first, just after midnight. Amesqua transferred from this Delano County Sheriff's Office after Sheriff Apperson resigned and Sheriff Randy Walz, who was accused of felony. I have documents stating Amesqua found my daughter's body, and yet no one can give me a report that he wrote. No one at the Delano County Sheriff's Department will give me the document he would have written after being the first to arrive on the scene. The first person at the scene of my daughter's murder has had no voice in the investigation. The person who would be responsible for the most important report of the entire case, the report of the initial scene, the report that would memorialize the suspicious circumstances they referenced, has been given no representation of his view on the case. I have no doubt in my mind that this case was a deputy cover-up. Delano Sheriff's Office give me the, won't give me Amesqua's report if it exists because it has information that will continue to confirm my suspicions that, that they are denying my family justice. I have someone that I suspect of Tamara's murder, and I have people who back up my suspicions. Three people came forward to Delano Sheriff's Office saying that they believed that this suspect was responsible for killing my daughter. Tamara's death was not a suicide. Her death was not simply suspicious. It was a homicide. The Delano Sheriff's have denied my daughter and my family justice. They've denied us justice without even pretending they haven't. They've not only let a man go away with murder, they've incentivized him to kill more. I stand before you, asking you to please demand the Sheriff's Department investigate the Gil Brothers deputies. We demand that the deputies who were involved be investigated. We demand Michelle Green be investigated. We demand that there be a policy change that enforces people can't sign off on burial without full knowledge of the circumstances. This is corruption. This is injustice, and because of this injustice and corruption, a murderer has gone free and our family has faced continual police brutality for three years. This was my daughter Tamara. She wrote this poem when she was ten years old because she was so impacted by nine eleven. This shows her spirit. And I have documents for you, but I have two more people to speak. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you for your comment. Would anybody else like to come up and speak?
Hello. My name is Logan. I'm the brother of Tamara Sanders, a twenty-nine-year-old murder victim. My family has faced nothing but abuse and dismissal regarding Tamara's death. My mom was told about Tamara's death over the phone when she was home alone. No one arrived to deliver the news in person to offer emotional support or empathy at a time when my mom was faced with the worst thing a mother could ever experience, the death of a child. No matter who we ask or who we call, we get different variations of their lie. No matter what we do or what we say, they waffle on their attempts at placating our rage as we try to pursue justice for Tamara. First, it was an accident, then it was a suicide. Apperson called Tamara an homeless people strays when talking to my mom. In a time when we deserve to be faced with sympathy, compassion, and condolences, they called her a stray. The only person my mom was allowed to talk to for the first six weeks of knowing what happened were Michelle Green and Diana Stanley. Michelle Green told my mom that she should be grateful that she identified Tamara, that she quote, "solved this as quickly as she did." She was rude and upset in the face of our disappointment that Tamara was buried with our consent, without our consent. We are not excited by how efficient Michelle was when she could not communicate and show empathy with my mom. The owner of Goble's Mortuary told my mom that law, that the law requires attempted contact with the family for thirty days before anything happens to a body. Then another ten days for a response. Despite having everything needed for identification and suspicions of Tamara's identity on the day of the, of the fire, she was signed off for burial by Alicia, Alicia Northrup as a Jane Doe less than thirty days after the fire. C C scans are standard practice in fire victims, and Michelle Green says that we're not, we are incapable of getting access to the images because they are encrypted. Then she sent us still images on a DVD. When asking for a change in cause of death, my mom faces dismissal. We've been lambasted with absurdist theories to blame Tamara for her death. Every attempt we make at seeking the truth is responded to with patronizing remarks about how my mom should have gratitude that they did less than the bare minimum of their job. My mom called to ask why Tamara could be buried without family consent. And Alicia, the one responsible for signing off on the burial, recently said we should be glad they didn't cremate her, that we should be grateful they didn't cremate Tamara when they hadn't even concluded if it was a suicide, a homicide, or an accident, when the official autopsy report wasn't finished until over a month later. That we should be appreciative that they didn't destroy potential evidence in bringing our family and Tamara Sanders justice. After all our heartache and suffering, all the effort to bring justice to Tamara, the triplicate published quotes from Randy Walz regarding Tamara's death. On July twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty twenty-one, Walz said there were no obvious signs of foul play or signs of arson. McManus said on five twenty-two, twenty twenty-four that he quote, "would rather spend time with his kids than listen to my mom's nonsense," and that he still had no evidence that this was a homicide, end quote. I would say possible bullet wounds and doors being locked from the outside are a clear indication of foul play. To this very day, the Delano County Sheriff's Department continues to lead my family on, continues to trickle out information and lead us to believe that maybe one day something will happen. They've been stringing us along for years and denying our family any semblance of justice. Thank you for your time.
Hello. My name is Alex. I'm the sibling of Tamara Sanders, a twenty-nine-year-old murder victim. My sister's first autopsy was botched, denying us the truth of what happened to her. The first autopsy claimed to be performed by Dr. Olson and Michelle Green as the assistant. Their report claims there were no natural or traumatic abnormalities to the head. However, the second autopsy clearly found a two-centimeter curved irregular defect on the left frontotemporal region. The first autopsy report outright declares the presence of Tamara's chest plate, tongue, as well as liver. However, in the second autopsy, there is no chest plate or tongue present, and the largest internal organ, the liver, was gone. The first autopsy indicated there was food digesting, while not specified that indicates that a stomach was present, but that too was missing with the esophagus among other organs when exhumed for her second autopsy. To my horror, as Tamara's sibling, the initial autopsy report from Dr. Olson and Michelle Green stated that her uterus and her ovaries looked normal. Between the making of this report and Tamara's second autopsy, her reproductive organs went missing. Michelle Green has had the gall since the first autopsy to claim that nothing has gone missing. Nothing was removed and not put, put back in the viscera bag or the brown paper bag that they put in her. And the report claims nothing was kept, yet multiple parts of Tamara went missing between autopsies. Where Dr. Olson and Michelle Green put abdomen, a good pathologist broke it down into three separate categories. Where Dr. Olson and Michelle Green put head and neck, a copied and paste, and copied and pasted their summary, a good pathologist had multiple sections for both the head and neck. There are so many holes in this autopsy, it almost seems like it didn't truly happen, almost like Swiss cheese. The first autopsy put all the information under evidence of injury and told readers to refer to that instead of explaining what happened to each body part. I don't believe that Dr. Olson performed this autopsy. I personally believe that Michelle Green wrote the autopsy with the belief that she was giving it to a family of idiots. They spelled my sister's middle name wrong. They wrote their autopsy report in Arial font, then expect us to believe that they aren't responsible for the missing organs? They were in custody of her body when it happened, when her organs went missing. When Michelle Green has been nothing but unprofessional since the very beginning, as if writing an autopsy in size thirteen Arial font isn't beyond unprofessional, rude, and compassionless. My family knows this is a murder case, yet everyone continues to tell us this is an accident, an accident they are not even transparent about in their own autopsy report, that they won't even officiate because they know it's wrong. Yet, we are told to be grateful they didn't destroy my sister's body any more than the removal of her organs. My sister was buried before the final autopsy report was finished, buried when death wasn't determined, and buried when such a botched and useless autopsy that might as well have never have happened. And she was buried before the family was notified. I want everyone, I want anyone and everyone who was present at my sister's autopsy to be investigated. I want Michelle Green investigated, and most importantly, I want justice for my sister Tamara Sanders. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your comments.
Do you guys have any questions for me?
We can't respond at this time, I'm sorry.
Okay.
But thank you for speaking up.
I do have some documents here.
If you would pass it over to Kylie, please. So, at this time, I'll ask for any other public comment out there. Please come on up.
You guys need to listen to this because after that fire, I went up there. Now, the gentleman that owns that building, I had known for a minute, and he showed me inside of that building, and it was just, you know, a hoarder's dream. So, for that gal to have crawled into the building somehow, that didn't happen. There was hardly room for a body to be on the floor of that building. There was no way for her to get out because it was locked. She couldn't unlock it from the inside. You need to investigate it. Michelle Green? That's not the first time I've heard her name doing, uh, underhanded things. There was a kid, mother called me. There was a kid who was found dead, and there was blood coming out of his head. But I saw the videotapes of what the Sheriff's Department did and didn't do. And, and then this kid was a UPS driver, okay? And when the parent went to get the belongings back from the mortuary, the kid's watch, the kid, his watch had been stolen. Well, Michelle Green told the parents there was no valuables, but the guy in the mortuary said there was. And if she was hired by Apperson, you have cause to believe that she's underhanded. So, I feel for this family, I get it, but you folks need to start talking to somebody. The sheriff didn't even bother showing up today. Okay. So, I don't know, you need to listen to what's being said. Thank you.
And just, just for the record, the sheriff tried his hardest to get here. He is tied up in something he couldn't get away from, so he was on his way.
My name is Neil Griffiths. Tamara's like a daughter to me. I, I don't know what happened. I just know that everything that Kelly's done, the things that she's found, there's obviously something going on here. So, I don't know if you guys can help us or not. We have nowhere else to turn, nowhere. So, I don't know if coming here today was the right thing or not, but we're asking if you can help, please help us because our daughter's dead.
Thank you.
Slight change of topic. It's been a little over three years now that the county has collected a one-and-a-half percent sales tax known as Measure R. For that money, we were promised as voters that you would address vital services, police, fire, emergency services, and infrastructure repair. Over the past three years, I guess about four-and-a-half million dollars of that money has been spent of the six million. The county has banked the remaining. What we've gotten out of that is no money, period, has gone to the fire department because it's a special, there are special districts here in the county, and for some reason, the county can't contribute to them. We've got a sheriff's department that was in turmoil and now can barely functionally patrol the county over the course of the last three years. I mean, I feel sorry for the sheriff in that he was handed that mess from previous administrations, but he is unlikely even with Measure R money to be able to do much about it. We've got emergency services which can barely handle an emergency. They can't seem to even practice. They can't seem to even practice tsunami alerts. When the fire occurred last summer for six days, the number you were purported to call in order to get information from the county, you got 13 seconds of silence and then got hung up on. Finally, after six days, a human being had to respond and didn't have any more information than could be gleaned from other more reputable sources. And then when it comes to infrastructure repair and road repair, I guess it's in the future, you're making up a list, but somehow I don't think any of the county's citizens take a tour through the Veterans Hall parking lot on their way to work every morning just to experience new asphalt, or perhaps the sheriff's station to also experience new asphalt. And I don't think many in the county, I mean, Ms. Starkey might object to this, but I don't suppose many in the county appreciate the fencing around the baseball field. Quite frankly, this is a disaster, Measure R, and the citizens have to go to the extent of putting it on the ballot in order to repeal the measure so taxpayers can have a few extra dollars in their pockets at a time when inflation is rampant and the economy isn't giving us much of a break. But I would think that there are better ways to spend that money. But we'll see, it'll be on the ballot in the fall again, and likely every two years from now until we get the thing repealed.
Thanks, Sam. Any other public comment out there?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, Tamara. Thank you.
Morning.
Brandon Bieber. It's a sad picture here. And I'm just wondering, you know, you guys talk about strategic plans, consent agenda with 17 items, and how you guys read all that, for one. But, you know, how are problems getting addressed? You know, shouldn't have to come up here and talk about certain things, but, you know, whether it's fishing, or insurance fraud, you know, forest regulation, not happening, right? Finally, we're getting some fire lines, maybe? Homelessness, you know, have you seen the power lines going, going up? Those look really good. Gosh, that's great to have that, you know, could go underground, but really adds to the community. Medical providers, you know, getting medical assistance. So how are we addressing these problems? I know you guys are doing a great job, I appreciate your guys' times, but, you know, budgets of over, what, a quarter, quarter of a billion dollars? You know, so what are we getting for that? So I'm just encouraging you to find your influence, you know, don't just take what Sacramento says, you know. CDCR, what's going to happen with Pelican Bay? You know, I just lost my job, forced to resign, so it'd be nice to get a progress report there. Mr. Short, you guys have, what, 50 committees and more? We're going to add to them, but what are we doing? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bieber. Any other public comment before I close it? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. Thank you for all your comment. And we have a 10:45 timed item that we need to address, and it is approve and adopt a proclamation proclaiming May 2024 as Older Americans Month, and receive an update on state legislation that may affect Delnor County's senior residents as requested by Executive Director of Area One Agency, Area One Agency Maggie Craft. Is Maggie online?
I'll move to approve the proclamation.
Second motion.
We have a motion in a second, Kylie.
Supervisor Short?
Yes, did we do public comment? We did not do public comment on this item.
We did not. Good catch. Supervisor Short, any public comment on this item only?
What are you talking about? Where do you ask?
Item number 19, a 10:45 timed item, approve and adopting a proclamation.
Thank you.
Any public comment? No? Okay, now, would you please pull the vote, Kylie?
Supervisor Short?
Still yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Borges?
Yes. Okay, now, we'll receive an update. Right after this, the proclamation is read in by Supervisor Starkey.
Proclamation in honor of Older Americans Month, May 2024. Whereas May is the Older Americans Month, a time for us to recognize and honor Delnor County older adults, and whereas through their wealth of life, experience, and wisdom, older adults guide our younger generations and carry forward abundant cultural and historical knowledge, and whereas older Americans improve our communities through intergenerational relationships, community service, civic engagement, and many other activities, and whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently, and whereas Delnor County wants its older residents to have the resources and support needed to stay involved in their communities. And now therefore be proclaimed that the Delnor County Board of Supervisors recognize May 2024 to be Older Americans Month. This year's theme, Powered by Connection, emphasizes the profound impact of meaning interactions and social connection on the well-being and health of older adults in our community, and urges residents to join in promoting programs and activities that foster connection, inclusion, and support for older adults, passed and adopted this 28th day of May 2024.
Thank you, Supervisor Starkey. Okay, Maggie, if you're still there, sorry.
Of course, I'm still here. Thank you so much for this proclamation, recognizing older Americans and what we provide to our communities. If I could say one thing about that, I would say encourage everybody to get to know people in other generations and not group us together by the generation that we are assigned to because we're all individuals and we are all different. So that would be my one, one request of all of us today, is make friends in different generations, and, and you'll know more about people when you do that. I look like I've frozen, I'm not sure if I have or not. Okay, I guess I'm supposed to do that, but I, okay, there we go. Anyway, so yes, I wanted to update you on a couple of things that are happening at the state level that could impact us, that, that will impact us. The first thing that is really of more immediate concern is regarding what's happening with the state budget. As we all know, there's a deficit, and the state is looking for, the governor has looked for different ways to try to mitigate that, and one of the areas of mitigation, unfortunately, is money from the Older Californians Act that was provided to, to communities a few years ago, but really was set to really kick in starting this next fiscal year, and that is money for meals, for home-delivered meals, for congregate meals, and it is for our two providers, Delnor Senior Center and Humboldt Senior Resource Center. We're seeing, we are anticipating losing $850,000 that would go to provide, provide these meals. This is not a great time to be losing that kind of funding, because as we all know, food costs, transportation costs have gone up, and, and older adults who are living on fixed incomes can't afford that, and, and older adults who also have health issues that make it difficult for them to cook their own nutritious meal really need these meals. And I did some math, and what we're looking at is a loss of 605 meals a week. And if we have people getting meals five days a week, that's 121 people. Now, that doesn't sound maybe like a lot, but it is if you're one of those 121 people. Statewide, it is a much larger cut, we're, you know, we get very little of the funding, but what we get, our providers use very efficiently and provide great service. So I wanted you to be aware of that, because it is, part of the governor's may revise, and if you are concerned about that, if anyone in your community is concerned about that, we encourage you to call your senator, state senator, and assembly member, and let them know what will happen, especially if you're getting those meals yourself. Let them know what you're going to do instead of getting those meals, because this is, this is likely to occur otherwise if we don't push it back. Any questions on that before I go to the next thing?
Thank you, Maggie. Yeah, let's bring it back to the board and see if there's any questions. Okay, nope, so far so good.
Okay, great. So yeah, again, if, if you're so inclined, I really encourage everyone to reach out and, and speak up on that issue. The other thing that's happening at the state level is a bill called SB, which is Senate Bill 1249. I'm sorry, I can't see you guys, so I don't know what's happening there. Anyway, it's a bill, SB 1249, and this is a bill that the Department of Aging has put forth to what they say modernize Older Americans Act, but specific, specifically modernize older area agencies, area agencies on aging across the state. And, and one of the things that they're doing is they're going to give counties the option of whether they want to run their own area agency on aging. And right now, there's about 39 of the 58 counties that are in multi-county agencies setups, or like ours, a nonprofit multi-county, Delnor and Humboldt. So this bill would impact 39 of those counties, because potentially, any of those counties in those multi-county AAAs could say, oh, sure, we want to run it for our county, and what that would then do is push the other counties in that current AAA network into, I call them orphan counties. There really isn't, this, doing this will create a system where you have a lot more bureaucratic work to be done in each of those separate AAAs, and not a lot more money, not more money going into it to provide service. So it'd be an administrative undertaking. Counties don't have to do it, but they're being given that option, and to some extent, this looks like a political grab, that there are a few counties out there who would like to be able to run their area agencies on aging, especially larger counties, and this would afford them the ability to just say, yeah, we're, we want that, give it to us. The other thing they're looking at is redoing the interstate funding formula that decides how the funds get spread out across the state. They're really talking about money falls a person, which means that rural areas like ours will get less money. Right now, the funding formula gives money by the person, but they also take into account your, your ruralness, the landmass that you serve, so you get a little bit more for that. But again, it is more expensive to provide services in rural areas, and they aren't going, they're not looking at giving a factor that appreciates that. So this, this new idea may reduce the amount of funds, a little bit of funds we get may be reduced more. They're also looking at trying to offer services, all the same services across the state, no matter where you live, get the same service. We all think that's a great idea. We cannot do that without funding to do it. Our funding for the, what we call information assistance, transportation, legal services, in-home services, what they call supportive services, we receive $170,000 a year to provide services. $40,000 of that goes to, with our subcontract to legal services. So that leaves us $130,000 for both counties to provide the required minimum services. How do we do more than that? We can't, we can't do more than that without more funding. Large communities can, large communities have care management programs. That would be great, it would be great if we could have care management programs, but we don't know where to find that with $130,000 a year. So there, so there is going to be, these are the things, and, and we need to update, we need to look at where older adults are living, but we need to understand that there's a lot more older adults than there were in 1965, when the original Older Americans Act was passed. In fact, next year, the Older Americans Act turns 60. So if it were a person, it would actually be eligible for services from itself, if that makes any sense. And it would be very disappointed in what's available, in what it funds at this point for our rural communities. So I wanted to let you know about that bill. Our association is, is against it, because it is trying to put us all into a mold, and the Older Americans Act says local impact, local control, local information, you create your systems to meet the local needs as defined, and that you don't automatically just assume that you treat people in Delnor the same way you treat people in Los Angeles, for example. So these are some of the things that are happening at the state level. I thought it would be nice to just give you the update. I know you have a lot of stuff on your mind. I want to thank you again for supporting the administrative piece of the work that we do, which is very costly and very bureaucratic, and, and, and I wouldn't wish it on any county that isn't already doing this work. So that's all I want to say today. I appreciate your time, I know you're busy folks, so thank you very much.
Up to the board here, if they have any questions for you before you go.
I just want to comment, Maggie, thank you so much. We are a little distracted, and we had a pretty tough public comment, so we do apologize. But in speaking with SB 1249, it's something that I do believe that this board will want to kind of weigh in if it gets through the legislature. I have talked with our local director of the DHHS, and she is actually, as of now, based on what the information she has, she's opposed. She thinks that the services that we receive from Area One Agency on Aging are adequate, and they're, they're good for Delnor County. They don't have the capacity within DHHS to actually take on another program and department. So again, it would have to be the decision of the Board of Supervisors, but for now, that's just kind of where we're at with that. I do appreciate the services that you have been providing to Delnor County. Getting a full-time staff up here has been vital. We are now having more programming, we've had more get-togethers with our senior citizens at the Senior Center, and Alex is doing a tremendous job here in Delnor County. So we're grateful for Area One Agency on Aging, for recognizing that Delnor County needed that representation, and for you bringing that position to us, and I continue to enjoy working alongside you, and I hope that we can have more growth and opportunity in the future, even though it does look a little bleak right now, I have a feeling that we'll be able to turn it around.
Thank you, and I want to thank you for serving on our advisory council. That is a really important connection for us to have with Delnor County, and I wanted to let you know that we did receive a grant from the Public Utilities folks. I don't know the acronym offhand, but it will enable us to offer a hire, we want to hire another person up in Delnor who will offer classes, iPad classes, at both up in Smith River and at the Delnor Senior Center, that will be free and will be able to offer people access to those iPads to use, to learn, and to stay connected. So that's something we'll be, we'll be working on very soon. We just received a notice of that award, and, and wanted to focus on Delnor with that.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Maggie.
Thank you, have a good day, and take care of everybody there.
All right.
Tough times, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, legislative and budget issues. Item number 24, we are approving the use of Measure R funding to lease a facility, other storage space and associated facility costs for search and rescue, and the boating safety division as requested by the sheriff, coroner, and recommended by the Measure R Oversight and Advisory Committee. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Okay, so I have issues, of course.
Okay, so I have issues, of course. So the Search and Rescue is a nonprofit, okay? And with that in mind, I don't know how the board can utilize Measure R funds to make a contribution of forty thousand dollars to a nonprofit. So that's one I couldn't get over. And, and the reason why is because if you're a nonprofit, that doesn't mean you have to show accountability to the public for that money. So like, I don't have access to audits, I don't have access to financials. And when you hear stories, and I know it's hearsay, but you know, I mean, you can tell by how many people are actually volunteers of the SAR. You have a tendency of believing those stories. So the Measure R was passed by two-thirds vote. Did any of you read the sample ballot of what you were passing? How many did? How many of you guys read that? Anybody? All right. Because it doesn't say that you can make contributions to nonprofits. And so I did put a little bug in the ear of Howard Jarvis Tax Association this morning before coming in. Why hasn't the county looked for other avenues to store the SAR equipment? Now, my understanding, they used to have the boat out in the harbor, and then I haven't gotten the story yet because I just, you know, got home from Costa Rica. So I, I have to find out why the harbor told the sheriff's department or the search and rescue to remove the boat out of the harbor. Now, the harbor is going to be probably bankrupt by the end of next year. So this county's going to have to take over the harbor. And with the boxsmith having moved out of his, his shop, I don't know why that the harbor couldn't accommodate the search and rescue team to put their vehicles and such there, or if the county has other properties. So. You guys are passing up, well, who are you giving the money to? You need to tell the public who you're giving the money to. Because there's no line item with the sheriff's department for search and rescue. Thank you.
Any other public comment? None, bring it back to the board for discussion?
No, I, I just want to make sure that our CEO can address some of the public comment that was just brought up because I think it leads the public in the wrong direction with the facts of how the sheriff and how the county could support this with Measure R funds. If you could please clarify.
Yes, I can. This is operating costs that are associated with search and rescue and boating safety divisions of the sheriff's department. They are both the responsibility of the sheriff's office. Search and Rescue does have a group outside of Search and Rescue that is a nonprofit that supports them. I believe they're called Friends of Search and Rescue. This has nothing to do with that, it's not tied to the county. These are, it's a responsibility under the government code for the sheriff's office to provide search and rescue services to this community, and these are costs associated with that.
There's no duty to search.
Thank you.
And currently, there is funding for search and rescue under the sheriff's department. So each budget has line items. Under the sheriff's budget, there is already a line item for search and rescue.
Yes, that is correct. We are lucky enough in this community to have a lot of volunteers that provide services for search and rescue, but it is a responsibility of the sheriff's office. And Measure R is used for law enforcement and the support of emergency response. And search and rescue and boating safety is an emergency response.
And, and if there ever was a year for us to really recognize and appreciate the fact how much search and rescue has done, it's this year. They were involved in the fire, we've had two missing mushroom pickers, and search and rescue has been there, search and rescue was there when the snow happened last February. So I'm, I'm very supportive of search and rescue, I don't view them as a nonprofit, I view them as a, an arm of the sheriff's department, and so I will motion to approve this.
I will second. We have a motion and a second. Kylie, would you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Borges?
Yes.
Okay, item twenty-five, approve and authorize the chair to sign a petition on behalf of the Board of Supervisors supporting a request from the Golden State Salmon Association to the California State Legislature for the state investment in salmon hatcheries as requested by Supervisor Howard. Yes, that's an easy one. I'll move, we approve this petition signing.
A second.
We have a motion, a second, let's take some public comment on it, please.
I'm sorry, I just got to comment again. Must be nice to spend other people's money. A hundred million dollars for salmon restoration? Sure, I think it's probably best left in the hands of the UROC than this with Golden State Salmon Association, but I'm not sure where you have your meetings, Mr. Howard, for the Golden State Salmon Association? Reading, Sacramento? I know you guys put on good dinners and probably have good raffle prizes, but what are they doing? Shutting down our salmon fishery? So is this what we're promoting? Is this what we want to promote more closure? Because that's what is happening right now. Our salmon fishery is closed. So we're going to give a hundred million to close it more? What are you going to do? Go look at the mouths of the river. Look how many sea lions are there. Do something about it.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, bring it back for a vote.
Let me circle back on the inepties of some people in the audience today. Very inept individuals in the audience. To fully understand this issue, you have to understand that infrastructure in the state of California, specific to the salmon fishery and specific to hatcheries, has been unfunded for quite some period of time. Most of the states, including ours, have turned to groups like the Talawedini, who's also taken over our fish hatchery here, to help support raised salmon that have become critically extinct in some areas, including the Coho salmon, which we're not allowed to raise here in the state of California. As you're aware, the Klamath River dams are coming down. As you're aware, many hatcheries have failed to put the number of fish back in our rivers that support the bottlenecks at the river system. And because of that, we're supporting through this resolution and signing on is to invest in that infrastructure that we need to rebuild these stocks. And so that's why it was an unanimous decision likely to be taken by the board today. And if you wish to add to it, I am unfamiliar with this organization and have never attended an event by them, but I am willing to support movements that help put money into this infrastructure.
That's enough, Mr. Bieber, that's enough, please. Brandon, please, that's enough.
Yep, and that's why people don't pay any attention to you, Brandon.
Okay, now, I'd like, Kylie, would you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Vice Chair Borges?
Yes.
Okay, we have covered almost everything, only thing that's left now is the supervisor report outs. Mr. Howard, would you like to take a recess, or? Do you want us to hang on? Okay, we're going to take a short five-minute recess, please. Let's get back online, and at this time, we would like to receive other brief report outs or announcements relative to the County of Del Norte programs and projects, progress two-by-two committees, goal committees, and our board and staff travel training reports. Supervisor Starkey, would you like to start us off?
Sure, I'm just going to quickly go through the meetings I attended, and then I want to spend a little time on Last Chance Grade. I attended the in-home support services, a call to talk about processing the, and recreating the mandated advisory committee. I attended the Juvenile Justice Council monthly meeting to discuss services for our at-risk youth, including the implementation of a teen court. At that meeting, there was a representative from Talawedini Nation, and she provided us with information that the tribes are already doing with regard to programs, upstream programs for our at-risk youths that are in existence, and we're hoping to mirror some of those things. I attended the committee meeting for the Fourth of July, that's going to be a recurring thing until we actually have our celebration on July fourth. We have great things planned for the community. I attended a Redwood Region Rise interview, I was interviewed by CCRP. They are the consultants who are helping the Public Health Department with the community health assessment, the CHA. They recently did a Facebook promotion with regard to the CHA that was very cute, so if you can log onto Facebook and check that out. I attended the Measure R meeting, which I found to be really interesting. I really liked how that information was presented to the committee, and so there was a lot of dialogue and back and forth so they could ask some questions. I did have coffee with the chief probation officer, we both speak that same language, and so it was great to kind of talk with him about services that are being offered to the individuals in our community. I virtually attended the city council's budget workshops, I attended all twelve hours of those workshops. I found it to be extremely educational, and I, you know, I would encourage the county to also do something similar in the future if we could. I participated in a collaborative cleanup with Del Norte Mission Possible Code Enforcement and Building Maintenance. It's something that we're trying to get together, where we collaborate so that we can share our resources. Mission Possible's eyes got really big when Building Maintenance was able to bring in the Bobcat in order to clean out a lot of the debris, and yet they brought all the manpower. So it was really kind of a great collaboration. I assisted with placement of the flags at the Memorial Day event at the Veterans Center, and then I was able to attend the Memorial Day ceremony yesterday at the Veterans Cemetery. And I've been back to Del Norte County since two thousand seventeen, and I've attended every Memorial Day service. And this, yesterday's was the most powerful and impactful one that I've been to. It was just well-attended, lots of support, the community came together. And so I just want to give hats off to the VFW because you guys are making a difference, and you're making the veterans here feel very welcomed. And lastly, and this, I will try and go through this fairly quickly, but I really encourage anybody who wants more information to just reach out to me, but I want to share this with my colleagues, is I did attend the Last Chance Grade Stakeholder All-Day Workshop. And in that workshop, they provided us really with the two considerations that Caltrans, the director of Caltrans is the one that has to make the decision on which route to take, so Route X and Route F. Route F is the big tunnel that's going to go through the hillside. Route X is going to be in the current existing route slightly inland, and we had to go through all the pros and cons, and I'm really referring to it as the cons and cons, because there's not a really good solution here, but we need this road fixed. So they go through and they talk about what is going to be our delivery risks and then performance risks. And Route X is going to be easier to deliver, right? It's going to be less costly, there's going to be less loads of debris that need to be hauled out, the construction time will be less. The major critical flaw in X is it's going to close our lanes, and it's going to impact us locals the longest. Where Route F won't have those closures, but it comes with a, they're predicting a two-point-one-billion-dollar price tag to build Route F, which is the tunnel. It's going to have an estimated one hundred, a million cubic yards of excavated material in order to get it out of the hillside, and where are we going to put that? And it's going to have the most impact environmentally on the old-growth redwoods. So eventually, what I really want to just say is that we've got down to two routes, the director of Caltrans will make that decision, but the community got a chance to weigh in as to how it's going to impact us locally. If price was no object, we would probably prefer Route F, but that comes with its toll too. So just to let you know, I'd be happy to share the material that I got from the workshop with the rest of the board so that you can be informed about the final decision, and I believe that's coming in June, that they'll be making that final decision as to which route to select. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Starkey. Supervisor Howard?
Yeah, I'll, I'll touch on that since it's fresh in our minds. I do know that we have Tony Travis coming up, he's the current director of Caltrans, and he'll be here, actually, the day of our board meeting in June, the first board meeting. I'm hoping to join him at the grade during that discussion. Director Brady had asked me to be up there to help have that conversation with him and walk around, I'm hoping Supervisor Stark could also be up there as a member of the Last Chance Grade Committee. I've had several folks from the Board of Supervisors of Humboldt County express some discontent with the current proposed F alignment. I thought that was interesting, as a lot of people participated over the last five years in the stakeholder groups that allowed us to get to the decision that we've all made collectively. And so it came as a little bit of surprise, especially as recently as it did within the last month. So trying to circle back on that, but we do need to be unified in this approach because I believe staying in the same alignment is an absolute mistake, given that it's currently failing at this time. I also wanted to highlight and bring back some attention to all the material that is being moved off of Highway one ninety-nine right now, as it's associated with the shavings, the grindings, the trees, et cetera. A lot of that material, as you may have read on social media this week, went over the hill into White City, and it's being used at biomass one, which is a power generation facility there. And I know I've, I've discussed this a lot with the board. Somehow, they found a way to make that feasible. And now they're generating jobs and electricity over the hill. Those same jobs and electricity could be being made here. And it's a concern because there was a time in our county's history when we had fifty-two mills here. Today, we have no infrastructure in which to now capture this biomass that's coming off our national forest and utilize it here and create the jobs and create the cyclic economy, create electricity which now goes into essentially a Medford grid. So I want to think about that as we're really trying to figure out, not only in our strategic planning processes through economic development, but also processes that allow a platform for some of these old mill sites to be developed, to maybe do something like this in the future. It's never too late. Also, having some discussions with a consultant by the name of Site Logic about how to provide some more resiliency in case of fire. And as we're all aware, we went down for quite some period of time because we only have one line in and one line out to provide electricity in our community. We've worked on stages with Bonneville Power Administration, Pacific Power, and Coos-Curry Electric to try to provide some redundancy that would travel north into Curry County and hook us back up. But right now, some of the early estimates for that infrastructure project's close to eighty million dollars. $80 million. And that $80 million comes hard to find those dollars to hook us up and find the necessary partners to make it happen, but there's a willingness and a way to do it. But while that takes place, there's some short-term efforts that we can make as a Board and as a community, and I'm thinking specifically about the school district, the hospital, and more importantly, the city, in providing a microgrid-type approach. And that's what we're speaking to Site Logic about, is potentially microgridding some critical infrastructure along Washington Boulevard, providing the necessary type of either renewable or generation, electrical generation through diesel generators, that would allow a switch to be turned on and a specific grid that provides those emergency services almost immediately. And my hope is here in the next couple weeks to bring something back to the Board with some help of Supervisor Short, to have this discussion with a full Board, and potentially even form a committee to work on potential grant funding that would allow us to offset some of the larger costs associated with putting in infrastructure that would allow the creation of the microgrid and to supply electricity to it. Also, attended the North Coast Regional Water Quality, uh, North Coast Unified Air Quality Management District meeting and completed our fiscal year budget. I had a meeting with Carrot Health on providing services to low-income families. Attended a senior center meeting, met with the Roads Department on several issues, and also, as Supervisor Starkey brought up, attended a CCRP Community Health Assessment interview process. In addition, also, the Memorial Day services were extremely well-done this year. Having attended many of them over the last decade, it's, this one was well-attended, and I really appreciate the Del Norte High School Band being there, and the singing that was performed by Ms. Weir was absolutely amazing. So, well done, and thank you, everybody, for your service to this community.
Thank you Supervisor Howard. Supervisor Short?
She is an extremely talented young lady. Yeah, mine only short, the last couple of weeks, I traveled to Monterey County for our annual RCRC meeting of the Chair. Each year, the Chairman invites the Board members to come to their county and gives them a little tour, shows them some highlights. Supervisor Chris Lopez of Monterey County brought us down and chose to take us away from what most people think about when they go to Monterey County, and that's Carmel and the golf course and the beaches. And he took us to the other side of the lettuce curtain, which I didn't know was a thing until he talked about it and brought us in to the agricultural side of Monterey County, which is very interesting. Got to see some great infrastructure, some family stories. Saw a million-dollar laser weeder that's just coming online and run by artificial intelligence. Just getting moving with using that, it's a pretty awesome piece of machinery. Was appreciative of Supervisor Lopez for showing us around. Also attended the solid waste meeting. That meeting mostly centered around budgets, as most do around this time of year. I appreciate the update on Last Chance Grade from both of you down the dais. As I had a conflict, I attended the North Coast EMS JPA meeting in Eureka. Budgets were also on that agenda, but in addition, we needed to clarify an error that we made previously when the JPA made the decision to enter into the competitive process for the exclusive ambulance operating area here in Del Norte County. We put in the minutes that Del Norte County would create the RFP for the consultant and then administer that process, and that piece, the administer of the process, was caught by Neil, and he said, "This isn't, this isn't right. It's lawfully not supposed to go that way." So we had to go back and correct that error, so. And at future meetings, we'll see an item come before us to talk about pre-funding that and that process as well. So that will be coming up, and that's all I have. Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Howard, just a minute.
I was hoping Supervisor Short would address one of the issues RCRC really had some success with, with the SB 1383 legislation that we got some pullback on. I was hoping he was going to address that in his board report, because it was been a big focus of RCRC.
That's, that is true, and I appreciate you bringing that up. The exemption, I'm assuming you're talking about the exemption that has been put forth the Legislature for rural counties has been successful. It's not a permanent exemption for the recycling of organic waste that was legislated by 1383, but it is hopeful that it will just roll into a permanent exemption. It was recognized by the Legislature that rural counties, it really just doesn't make sense we would create so little organic waste. The effort that it would take to recycle that really would kind of put us in the negative as far as what the efforts were to capture those greenhouse gases and such. So I have to hand it to Ted Ward, has kind of taken the lead on that as far as our voice to RCRC. But yes, that's some great news, and also, along with that, speaking of what you talked about on biomass and generating electricity, RCRC has a, oh, what am I trying to say?
JPA.
A JPA, thank you, that is working on creating a couple of pellet plants there, south and to the east of us, kind of closer to the I-5 corridor, but still up here in Northern California, looking to generate pellets and sell to Europe so they can produce electricity using those pellets. There's quite a bit of pushback from the people of California, because they think burning anything is a bad deal. So for now, we're going to be just selling those pellets, but it really does make a lot of sense to take that biomass out of our forests and create electricity for ourselves right here in the United States, so, in California. So, thanks for that reminder, Supervisor Howard, appreciate that. And that will do it.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I will adjourn this meeting until our next meeting on June 11th. Thank you, everybody.